Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this regular meeting of the Terre Haute City Council. It's a little bit after 6:00 PM on Thursday, October 2nd, 2025. We begin each meeting with a moment of silence, and the pledge of allegiance will be led in the pledge this evening by Councilperson Candace Hinton.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Michelle, will you please call the roll?
Councilperson Azar, Councilperson Boland.
Present.
Councilperson Chalos.
Present.
Councilperson Devon.
Here.
Councilperson Dinkle.
Present.
Councilperson Hinton.
Present.
Councilperson Lattimel.
Present.
Councilperson Nation.
Here.
Councilperson Thompson.
Here.
Eight are present; one is absent.
Thanks, Michelle. Councilperson Azar sends his regrets; he's got a restaurant emergency. Another one of our traditions is to begin each meeting with up to 30 minutes of comment on -- public comment on items not on the agenda. When you came in last -- when you came in, there was a signup sheet out there. If you didn't sign up and wanted to address us, you certainly can. But there's one name on this list, and it's Mark Smith. You want to approach the microphone, Mark, and talk to us?
Hi.
Welcome.
We come up here with the Terre Haute Street Department, and we were just in discussions, and the city is offering us a 655 contract.
Mark?
Yes.
I believe that your contract will be on our agenda later in the form of our salary -- a vote on your salary ordinance, and then there's also a vote on the budget.
Okay.
This is --
Okay.
This part of the meeting's for people who have business with the council that's not on the agenda.
No problem. We'll wait.
Okay, yeah, we'll look forward to hearing from you. Is there anybody who didn't sign up who wants to talk to the council about something that's not on the agenda? Hearing none. Corrections to the journal, please, Michelle.
There are none.
Communication from the mayor?
There are none.
Reports from city officials?
We have one.
Good evening, Council President Nation, members of the city council. I'm A.T., I'm the Human Relations Commission Director for the city. I'm pleased to share that the nomination process for this year's Black History Month banner project is now open. Last year, we had a tremendous community participation with this project. We had more than 50 nominations submitted, and we think that that level of engagement really shows how meaningful this project is to our city. So I want to take a moment first to acknowledge that the ISU PhD students from actually Councilperson Hinton's program at ISU, who under the direction of her colleague Dr. Mary Howard Hamilton, played an important role in revitalizing this project. These banners honor black leaders, visionaries, and trailblazers who have shaped Terre Haute's history and continue to inspire our future. We invite you all, and of course, the entire public, to once again nominate individuals whose stories should be celebrated on banners that will be displayed in downtown this coming February. As a reminder, the nominations are open now through October 29th at 11:59 PM. Details can be found on our city website, and I've left you all with a flyer. You can also check out the city's social media, and please share if you would be so kind. Thank you.
Thank you, A.T.
Thank you.
Welcome, Jesse.
President Nation, members of the council, I am just here to remind you that October 25th is our citywide cleanup. I want to officially get that on the record, officially invite you up to participate. We did a great job last time, so let's do that again. There'll be three locations, one at City Hall, where they will be taking only large items and sort of actually doing the dumpsters here. Woodrow Wilson will also be a place for large items, debris, dumpsters only, and then the street department at Wilkington. I mean, I believe is, they will be taking electronics there, they'll take some tires, they'll also have dumpsters, and they'll also take, like, wood, chipping, that kind of stuff. Any questions about the citywide cleanup?
Sounds great, Jesse. How many of these are we doing a year now?
We're doing two a year right now.
All right.
As many dumpsters as they're willing to provide for us.
Spring and fall.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jesse.
Question, is this posted somewhere, or you can share?
It is posted on social media, and we'll continue to sort of ramp up that messaging as we get closer to time.
It's on the city or on?
It's on city socials, yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Reports from standing committees?
There are none.
Reports from non-standing committees?
There are none.
Items previously tabled?
There are none.
Tax abatements for confirmation?
There are none.
Items on second reading?
There are none.
And items on first reading?
Mr. President, I believe you're going to be moving?
Yes. At this time, I'd like to move Resolutions 23 and 24 up to the top of the queue, and let's hear Resolution 23. Michelle?
Resolution 23, 2025, transfer $50,000 in the Cumulative Capital Development Fund, number 0402.
Welcome, Mayor.
Hey, good evening, Council President Nation and members of the Terre Haute City Council. We actually had a discussion about this a year ago. So the cemetery department had -- used to have a worker's shed that was quite literally caving in on itself. So what we've done is we're transferring funds internally within Cumulative Capital Development from two funds, one of them which is being discussed on this resolution, to pay for the new cemetery worker's shed. So I've gone out, I've checked it out, Rettinies did a wonderful job. It took a while to get some quotes, but we were able to get them better working conditions because it was -- it was a pretty tough building.
Thank you, Mayor. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to ask a question about Resolution Number 23, 2025? Since this is a resolution, we don't need to move to take action.
Mr. President?
Councilperson Lattimel.
If there is no discussion, I'll make a motion that we approve Resolution 23, 2025.
It's been moved by Councilperson Lattimel, seconded by Councilperson Chalos, that we approve Resolution 23, 2025. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that one passes. Next order of business, please, Michelle.
Resolution 24, 2025, renaming a portion of First Street from Maple Avenue to Holman Street, and a portion of Prairieton Road from Holman Street to Margaret Avenue.
Welcome, Lori.
Thank you, Councilwoman President Nation and council members. Thank you for your time this evening. The last time I was with you, you saw the master plan that had been developed to collaboration with the city and the county in Riverside, and you graciously adopted that as our guiding vision for redeveloping our riverfront. So I'm here this evening to move forward with some implementation plans towards that end. Would like to give you a quick update. Since I was here in April, we have roughly 80-plus acres of riverfront property that are in very productive conversations with new property developers and people that see a vision for developing our riverfront. Lot of conversation around that. We have, as a team, have hired Mike Knapp, who, if you know anything about Oklahoma City and their downtown riverfront development, you could mow their riverfront 25 years ago. It was a trickle. And now they're going to host the LA 2028 Olympics for their canoe slalom in downtown Oklahoma City. So we are thrilled that Mike Knapp is going to help us activate our river and bring that two-and-a-half decades of experience to the table. He's just a brilliant connection for us. In addition, I'm here tonight to talk about helping to create a better, stronger identity for our riverfront. As you see in the resolution, we are asking to rename up from First Street north, south, and parts of Prairieton Road from Maple Avenue down to Margaret Avenue. And we would rename that permanently as a way to create identity, and eventually, as we build out the riverfront along that space, creating a gateway down what is now First Street toward our riverfront and further development. So we have had communication strategies to inform residents and businesses along that thoroughfare. We sent out certified mailings. We had a public open house on September 25th to answer questions, accompanied that with an FAQ in that mailing. I had a meeting last night as well, and I personally have stopped by most of the businesses along that thoroughfare to answer questions and make sure they received the mailing. And we will also be providing for, to ease the transition of an address change, some small grant and reimbursement opportunities for the businesses if they need to replenish. Oh, I heard from one, they need new keychains that have their address. So we want to be helpful as much as we can, but we also are reminded that the post office will indefinitely forward all mail to those people along that thoroughfare. So we'll ease the transition, but I think it's a great step forward, and would really appreciate adopting this path forward, and would be happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Lori. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to ask a question about Resolution Number 24, 2025? Hearing none. Counsel?
Mr. President?
Councilperson Thompson.
I was at the area planning meeting last night, and there were a few business owners that raised some concerns, and they did make a good point. Was the option of, I guess, an alternative name for the road considered, like, you know, we have our memorial roads for officers that have been killed in the line of duty, was that something that was considered by Riverside?
We did take a look at that. We really would like this to be a permanent indefinite naming of the road, so when people talk about, "Where are you going?" I'm going to such-and-such at Riverside Road. Riverside Road, and we think that's the best way to permanently start branding that space and getting people talking about where they live and where they have their businesses.
And in regards to the grants, the gentleman were talking about how, at the end of the year, I don't think my microphone's working.
It's flashing.
Yeah. How at the end of the year, you know, they've recently just spent quite a bit of money for new promotional material. How much is available in terms of the grants for business owners?
We're looking at that right now, and I've actually reached out to both of the businesses that were there last night, had those conversations, to really understand what are those impacts. What I've heard from the people I've talked to are business cards, letterhead, envelopes is primary, and not everybody uses those today. We have businesses, everyone from Alanco to Centerpoint Energy to Pulse Fitness, so all sizes of business. So we're hoping to have a pool of $3,000, and it will be on a first-come, first-served basis and help subsidizing those costs. I've also negotiated a kit of parts, so to speak, business cards, letterhead, and envelopes with Tabco at a reduced rate. So we'll be taking those calls as businesses call in, and if they so choose, there would be a community pricing available to them through Tabco.
So the grant, it would be a pool of $3,000 for all of those businesses along the street?
For all those businesses, yes.
Okay. About how many businesses are along there that are going to be impacted?
They're about 30. Surprisingly, as I've done my kind of inventory, most do not have addressed the street name on their signs. There are a few, a couple of them have an eight-by-14 metal sign, so I've gotten prices on those that actually have the street name, but if you look at some of them, they just have the number above on their window. So the number with street names is very limited for signage.
What did you find in terms of the cost of the replacement signs?
The metal, the small, about an eight-and-a-half by 14 is just at about $99.
I don't have any near quotes.
Thank you. Anybody else? Councilperson Boland?
I'm not really sure, but what's the process for changing 911 addresses?
We'll work with area planning. In fact, the addresses we received were from, and they coordinated with 911. They will get populated directly. No one will have to take any action in terms of property owners to update the 911 in emergency services.
Thank you, I yield.
Anybody else?
Mr. President?
Councilperson Lattimel.
I know you said about 30 businesses, and I drive that about every day, so I apologize, but how many actual residences is this?
We, so we mail to property owners and adjacent property owners. So we mail into unique property owners are about 60 to 65, but we have individual property owners that may have multiple property parcels, so we may, we have to mail to each of those for this next mailing if this gets approved.
So overall, you mailed to about 60, or that was just residences and 30 businesses?
We had about 90 parcels.
Okay.
And then unique property owners with 60 to 65. And of that, there are about 28 to 30 businesses.
Okay. I yield, thank you.
Thanks. Councilperson Devon.
If we're done with discussion, I'll make a motion that we approve Resolution 24, 2025.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilperson Devon and seconded by Councilperson Hinton that we approve Resolution 24, 2025. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes.
Thank you very much.
Yep. Next order of business, please, Michelle.
Appropriation 10, 2025, $119,240 from NVHR number 02030000 to paving NVHR number
Welcome, Marcus.
Good evening, council. Marcus Meyer, City Engineer. So what we're looking here to do is to appropriate the carryover balance for last year so that we can continue more paving work. Hopefully get to that work here about 3, the 27th.
Great.
And I'm sure Brad could tell you all the roads, if you want to know those names, but...
Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to ask a question about appropriation Number 10, 2025? Council?
Mr. President, as a reminder, you will need to vote to take action on all the appropriations.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Councilperson Hinton.
No more discussion, and I move that we take action on appropriation Number 10, 2025.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilperson Hinton and seconded by Councilperson Boland that we take action on appropriation Number 10, 2025. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we can take action.
Mr. President?
Councilperson Hinton.
I move that we approve appropriation Number 10, 2025.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilperson Hinton and seconded by Councilperson Boland that we approve appropriation 10, 2025. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next order of business, please, Michelle.
Appropriation 11, 2025, $87,500 from Edit number 04040096 to Make My Move 0404009603432010.
Welcome back.
Good evening, council, president nation, and members of the Terre Haute City Council. So what we've got today, essentially, Edit, that fund gets reimbursed for the Make My Move program. Then we have to move that reimbursement line back into that specific line itself. So that's what we're doing, taking the reimbursement we receive from the IEDC, putting it in the Make My Move line to post those expenses. Moving forward in 2026, I'm sure you might have noticed this in your budget, there is not a Make My Move line. While the IEDC has agreed to fund it, Make My Move itself is in conversations with some of our statewide foundations about getting additional funding to lower the rate that local municipal governments have to pay because they understand the impacts of Senate Bill 1. So if the conversation emerges next year, we'll have to do not necessarily an additional appropriation, but create a line and do an in-series transfer. So closing out this year, next year is a big question mark, just based off of what's going on in the state.
If we do it in an in-series transfer, would that come out of Edit?
Yes, that's where it would be housed.
All right, thanks. Is there anyone in the audience who has a question about appropriation Number 11, 2025? I guess I jumped the gun in asking a question about where the money would come from.
Mr. President?
Councilperson Dinkle.
With further discussion, I move that we take action on appropriation 11, 2025.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilperson Dinkle, seconded by Councilperson Thompson, that we take action on appropriation 11, 2025. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we can take action.
Mr. President?
Councilperson Dinkle.
Move that we approve appropriation 11, 2025.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilperson Dinkle, seconded by Councilperson Thompson, that we approve appropriation Number 11, 2025. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that passes. Thank you, Mayor. Next order of business, please, Michelle.
Preparation 12, 2025, $22,210 from Cumulative Capital Development number 04020051 to Building Improvement number 0402005104442030.
Mr. Mayor?
Good evening, council, president nation. So this appropriation, we touched on it at the beginning, right? About two-thirds of the cemetery department building was housed out of that fund. Now we are moving funds from CCD to building improvement to pay that project off completely in cash. That way it could be done this year. So this is moving of one fund, CCD, to the other, to building improvement, and we post that expense in two places instead of one. It allows us to pay for a project out of multiple lines and reduces the overall movements within the budget.
Thank you, Mayor. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to ask a question about appropriation 12, 2025? Hearing none, council?
Mr. President?
Councilperson Lattimel.
If there is no discussion, I'll make a motion that we take action on appropriation 12, 2025.
It's been moved by Councilperson Lattimel, seconded by Councilperson Boland, that we take action on appropriation 12, 2025. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that one passes. We can take action.
Mr. President?
Councilperson Lattimel.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve appropriation 12, 2025.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilperson Lattimel, seconded by Councilperson Boland, that we approve appropriation 12, 2025. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that one passes. Next order of business, please, Michelle.
Appropriation 13, 2025, $648,820 from Casino, Casino number 01800000, principal on notes number 0180000003439178 for $629,110, and the interest on notes number 0180000003439179 for $19,710.
You're on.
Long time no see. So for this one, we're taking casino funding from this year and paying off leases for Engine 3, 6, and 2024 fire gear. By doing so, the principal and interest amounts for the next two years go away. So that amount of money is, quote, freed up within the next two calendar year budgets. What this also does is it allows us to save money on interest. So similar, if you're paying off your mortgage early or a vehicle early, we get interest savings because we're paying this off early. The benefit, $26,000 in interest that we save, the secondary benefit, $363,712 and $285,098 is, was freed up within the EMS budget to allow for additional equipment, pay, and other items.
Thanks, Mayor.
Yep.
Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to ask a question about appropriation 13, 2025? Councilperson Chalos.
Move, we take action on appropriation 13, 2025.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilperson Chalos, seconded by Councilperson Lattimel, that we take action on appropriation Number 13, 2025. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we can take action.
I move that we approve appropriation 13, 2025.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilperson Chalos, seconded by Councilperson Lattimel, that we approve appropriation 13, 2025. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, it's approved. Thank you. Next order of business, please, Michelle. Well, I guess, next, I'm going to move the budget to the end of the agenda, and that's appropriation Number 14, so we'll forge forward with general ordinances.
There are none.
Special ordinances?
Special ordinance 21, 2025, the 2026 salary ordinance for City Hall employees. I believe you have a proposed amendment before you. You must vote to take action.
Okay. Do we have a petition on this one? Welcome, Mike.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. What you have before you is the 2026 proposed salary ordinance for City Hall employees. I'm just standing in for Brandon as he stepped out, but I'm happy to answer any questions related to that.
This may be a question for Brandon, but what's the amendment? Molly?
I think I can answer the amendment. If you want me to.
The amendment was to add in a $200 per employee per year clothing allowance or uniform allowance for the EPD employees.
I see it now under Section 4. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to ask a question about special ordinance Number 21, 2025? This is what we've always referred to as the City Hall employee budget. This is everyone who's not covered in a union.
Mr. President? I guess for the record, maybe we should say what maybe the average increase percentage was for general hall employees.
That's a good point, Councilwoman Lattimel, and that proposal you have in front of you is reflective of a 3% increase across City Hall employees.
Mike?
Yeah?
Is that 3% overall or 3% a year for so many years?
Well, as City Hall employees don't collectively bargain, their salary ordinances are adopted annually as opposed to those units that collectively bargain on a longer term. So their proposal is only year-to-year, so...
I yield.
Councilperson...
Michael? This is a general question. I hope it's okay to ask it at this time. Can you tell us on these salary ordinance, which ones are covered under a collective bargaining agreement?
Yes. So the units covered by collective bargaining would be police, fire, police, civilian, transit, street, wastewater, cemetery, parks.
Parks.
I think I said transit, but if I didn't...
They did.
I believe that's it.
It's basically everyone but general employees and local officials and redevelopment.
I'd say that's correct.
And engineering. Yeah, well, engineering, they're part of the general employee salary ordinance.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Councilperson Hinton.
I think it's clear, so the Holman Links Pro and the Assistant Superintendent is where we are moving monies into the golf director position.
I believe that's... Yep.
Councilwoman Hinton, hold on, I'm going to pull this one up.
It's not in totality, is it?
Yeah, it's not in totality. Technically, it's two separate. I just want to make sure I read off this number correctly. That is a split, so part of it is coming out of that Holman Links, and Excel is loading. I believe in Ray Park. Let me check that ordinance real quick.
Ray and Holman.
Ray and Holman, yes, it is Ray and Holman, thank you. And that's that change of the Assistant, not necessarily Assistant, but Superintendent of Golf Position.
Mr. President. Councilperson Dinkle.
In looking at all of these salary ordinances, there's a, there's slightly different language used regarding percentage of insurance that the city will cover for employees. Some of them say up to a percentage, some say no less than a percentage, and some say equal to a percentage. Is there a reason why we have that differing language?
That, I would say the ordinances come from the language of the contracts. And those contracts have not been uniform across all those bargaining units. I would, I would say in, in practice, Councilwoman Dinkle, that they're all at that 70% figure with the exception of the transit union. No matter what any of them say, for all practical purposes, every other employee outside of transit is at that 70-30 split.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilperson Board.
So for those that aren't covered under collective bargaining agreement or contract, is their insurance, I mean, is it in the employee handbook? Is it referenced?
Yeah, no, the, yes, the benefits that are made available are referenced in the handbook, and then all employees are notified by the HR department of the relevant open enrollment dates and the information that comes through from those third parties, you know, being pushed out to the employees as it comes in. But in terms of the, the plan, that's something the city, you know, has a contract with through the AIM Medical Trust.
And our contracts for, is it for three years now? Is that two or three?
Yes, well, two years remaining after this.
Okay, so we don't have to worry about changing benefits for that percentage that we've got negotiated? Okay, thank you.
Yep. Councilperson Hinton.
Yeah, I'm still stuck on Parks and Recreation. The, the, thank you, Cheryl, for this. The, the change in superintendent salary was lowered.
Councilwoman Hinton, so on, when our incoming golf director took that position, there was a pay decrease because the duties and responsibilities were decreased. Now with that position, there is an agreement with sponsorship revenue, that a sponsorship revenue hits $50,000. That individual can then start to work back to where they left their salary at. But that can only come if additional revenue is brought in at a certain rate.
So the previous, the previous superintendent salary was, was based on revenue sponsorship?
No, incorrect. So we've got, let's kind of explain it this way. Two positions in 2025. Superintendent of Parks and Recreation in golf, Assistant Superintendent of the Parks Department. Next year, we will have a new Superintendent of Golf and the Parks, that would be Kylie, and then a golf director slash golf superintendent, however you want to label it. He takes a decrease to go to that position. However, if revenue tops a certain amount for the courses, he can then start to earn back some of his decrease. But the position there is essentially smaller than the position that he has, had moved from. Kylie did receive a bump, but not to the same amount that Eddie Byrd was paid because he had been there for longer. But she still did receive a bump now that she's stepping in his department.
Always looking for pay equity for women. I yield.
Mr. President. Oh, sorry.
We're going to rock, paper, scissors this one, or who's going first?
She just prompted another question for me, so, or your response prompted another question for me. So where is that captured, that that, if you get to that $50,000 sponsorship, you have a chance to?
That would be a contract with that employee.
You have an individual contract with that employee.
Mm-hmm. And it's not just that employee, Councilwoman Boland, I might add, your golf pro shops, for example, they stock the golf pro shop with items, and then they get a portion of that sale. That's also a contract with them. Like, the city doesn't stock Holman Links with the polos, that individual does. The golf pro does, which is what other golf courses do.
Okay. I wasn't aware. Thank you.
You're welcome. Councilperson Lattimer.
Mayor, when I looked at my comparisons from last year to this year's for general employees, can you tell me, because I noticed that if there were any employees moved from the general employee salary ordinance to a collective bargaining ordinance? Because it looks like wastewater took, to employees, maybe the lab technicians to the wastewater, under the wastewater now, they've been moved?
Yes, to.
To collective, to the wastewater, took two positions into their union, the two lab technicians, the street department took in their administrator into their union, and I believe those are the only two.
Well, you have the right to. I don't know if you did or not.
Facilities coordinator to the police, to, the facilities coordinator from the police department went to the police civilian?
Yes. And the two social workers.
Yeah, and the two social workers.
And.
Were moved from the general employees, now covered under the police civilian.
I'm sorry.
And they're now covered under the police civilian contract?
Yes, the two social workers, all, the two social workers, the technician, and the new Molly's position is, is part of the police civilian union.
Was that voted on by the police civilian union to take those in, or, I mean, how does that work?
Yeah, no, I mean, the union.
Do they ask to be part of it, or?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, the.
Same way with wastewater, they ask to be part of it?
That's right.
Is that how that works?
Yep. I mean, the administration has to consent to the, you know, alteration of the salary ordinances, but in each of those instances, you know, there are hourly employees working in those facilities, they fit all the other criteria that the other union members do. So if the union agrees to take them in, then they, they are allowed to do that.
Okay. I yield, thank you.
Mr. President.
Councilperson.
There's no other discussion, I move that we take action, take action on special ordinance number 21, 2025, as amended.
No, just take action.
Take action.
Second. It's been moved by Councilperson Hinton and seconded by Councilperson Dinkle that we take action on special ordinance number 21, 2025. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so we can take action.
Now we amend it.
Now amended, okay. Mr. President, I move that we approve the amended version of special ordinance, number 2021, 2020, 21, 2025.
No, just amend.
Amend.
It's been moved by Councilperson Hinton to amend special ordinance number 21, 2025, and seconded by Councilperson Boland. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, it's amended. Now we can vote to take action on the amended version.
I move to approve.
I'm sorry, now we can approve.
No, I don't, but thanks. But I thought, I knew what you meant. Mr. President.
Councilperson.
I move to approve special ordinance, number 20, number 21, 2025.
As amended.
As amended. Because it's been amended.
It has. It's been moved by Councilperson Hinton and seconded by Councilperson Boland that we approve special ordinance number 2020, I'm sorry, number 21, 2025, as amended. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? One passes. Next order of business, please, Michelle.
Special ordinance 22, 2025, the 2026 salary ordinance for MVH Street Department.
All right, do we have a petitioner on this one?
Yes, so what you have before you is the proposed 2026 salary ordinance for the street department. I know there are some representatives here to speak on that, so I'll let them have their opportunity, if there, unless there are any questions that I can answer initially for the council.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
All right, gentlemen, sorry to make you wait this long, but, please share your names and tell us what's on your mind.
My name's Mark Smith. This is Greg Lawrence. And like I said, we're here with members of the street department. What was offered to us was the 655, which probably has the numbers there. People have been here 10, 15 years, and with the small raises that we've been getting, we, our paychecks hasn't changed. Our bring-home paychecks hasn't changed in 15 years. I've been there 10 years myself, and I bring home the same that I have since 2016. And with everything else going up, we just can't afford it anymore. So what we are asking is if there's any way that we could raise it in the budget, raise more money, to possibly do a 10-10-10, which would put about $70,000 into this budget, approximately $100,000 more in the next budget, and then $115,000 next in the budget after that. That would bring us up to 10-10-10 on our raises instead of a 655.
I think this is the time when we ask for guidance from our city attorney.
Thank you, thank you. I can appreciate the statements that were made and the sentiments that were expressed. The, the offer that was made to the street department outside of the police department and fire department was the only offer that exceeded 5% in any year. The, the 655 that was extended to the street department was the only department that went above 15%, as I said, excluding the police department and fire department from that conversation. I think that that was meant to express the sincere efforts that this administration has observed from the employees of the street department in their efforts to, you know, make safe infrastructure for all of us to move about and go through our lives on. And the, if the resources that the street department had proposed and talked about up here, you know, I think if, if those were realistically available for this administration, you know, I, I think Brandon would be looking for bigger raises for all city employees, including the street department, and would love to be in a position to offer a 10% raise, which is, you know, a considerable amount for anybody who goes year to year waiting to hear what they're, in government, in my experience, a 10% raise is somewhat out of the norm. And the fact of the matter is Senate Bill 1's effects have not been truly felt yet, and the offer that was extended was what the city could reasonably, reasonably expect it could follow through on and comply with, and have the resources to utilize across all departments while recognizing that, you know, the street department employees are oftentimes called to work in hard conditions and do hard jobs at bad weather and things like that. And we believe that the agreement that we bargained provides specialty pays for those types of circumstances and appropriately reflects the services that they're being asked to You know, I think that, that makes the point I want to make. Thank you.
Mike, before you go, where are we in negotiating this contract?
So we met Monday this week, following, you know, the convert, they bargained with, you know, Joe Bulk from the Laborers, and we met May of this year. The conversation centered very much around the proposed insurance increase, or the, the possibility of an insurance increase. And during the course of those negotiations, it was made clear that, you know, that information needed to be available before the union was going to react. We got confirmation, and I want to say late August, Brandon got confirmed that the, you know, there's a 0% rate increase for next year on our health insurance. So we made that information known to Mr. Bulk, and, and we met this past Monday at their hall to confirm that, go through the, the rates. You know, they asked questions during that meeting about the potential for a rate increase in the second, in the, the following year of, you know, insurance. And we explained that that determination is very much dependent on the claims that accrue over the first six to eight months of 2026 in our health insurance plan. Without that information available, we could not get, you know, any, any sort of reasonable estimate as to what that potential increase could look like in 2027. But we have, you know, a contract that provides a ceiling on that rate increase for 2027. But knowing this specific figure, we just weren't able to accommodate that request. So, but that's where it stands.
Mayor, is there something you wanted to add?
Yeah, thanks, Council President Nation. You know, I think what I'll add is the frustrations that these gentlemen have are probably the same frustrations 90, 95% of all city employees have. Without a doubt, when you look at 2008, 2009, the property tax caps, there was a long period in Terre Haute municipal government history where we weren't doing 6% or 5% raises, we were doing 1% or 0%. I mean, look at the entire Stanford, the city depart, city departments. I know in every department, individuals have been recruited to go work for other cities or the private sector. When I look at my list of department heads, almost every single one has been recruited to do another job in the private sector or public sector that pays more. I mean, we are behind in a lot of our departments, but what we were literally not able to, like, quite literally financially impossible, you, you cannot correct that in one year, let alone one contract. The state requires a budget that we can afford, that we can pay. That is the balanced budget in front of you all. And we do what we can, we do mass purchases on equipment, we change revenue, we change expense lines as much as we can, and we try to offer what we can afford to the highest extent. And I believe that's what we've done here and in across the city to the best of our financial ability.
Thanks, Mayor. Gentlemen, we've heard from you. Is there anyone else you'd like to speak?
Yes, well, I'd like to say a few more things, if that's all right. About the insurance, we do understand it's not going up. A lot of us are paying $400 a month right now for insurance through the Street Department, and that's only going to go up from there. And as far as, you know, other departments, I understand that, not getting the same amount of raise. A lot of other departments out there are not first responders. We are considered first responders under federal law. So that's why we feel that we need to be treated as such and get a higher raise than some of the other departments that aren't. That's what I'd like to say.
Thanks, Mike. Is there anyone else from the audience who'd like to add anything? All right, we'll close public comment and counsel. Counselperson Bowlin.
I don't, Brandon or Michael, one of you. What happens if, because none of these contracts have been ratified, none of these have, what happens if they don't ratify the contract?
Then they would revert to the previous year amount in the raises under the previous year, and then we would go to arbitration, where essentially what the city does is we show our tax projections over the next few years, which are concerning, as I've explained to this council and this community several times, and then arbitration is decided from that. We do know several of our other unions have gone to a vote and have voted to ratify their contracts. They've just not been officially signed at a Board of Works meeting, so we're making substantial progress.
Okay, so when do they have to ratify by?
December 31st. I mean, I can show you the contracts from.
No, I just.
Yeah, I mean, there were approvals made in October, November, December of the respective year. I mean, you know, it's like.
Previous year's then.
Wastewater presents to the sanitary board, parks, so I mean, there's just various levels of approvals that are sought. But, I mean, the contract that we are in now runs through December 31st of this year. And the new ones begin January 1st, 2026.
And negotiations started.
They occur with everybody. I mean.
Approximately, for everybody, yeah.
Everybody, yes. Everybody, we have met with every union multiple times, extended an offer to every union. The Street Department, having met, you know, on Monday, we, you know, they will have a copy of the proposed contract to consider as a union, as they see fit. But the, every unit is aware of the city's offer for their three-year contract.
Counselperson Dinkle.
A couple of questions. One's procedural. So what happens if, say, we approve this tonight, and there's a change in the agreement that would affect the figures or the language in this?
So theoretically, with any appropriation, what this council does is it approves the amount of the budget and the amount in the, in the specific funds and accounts. So if something were to change inside of account, we'll use motor vehicle highway as an example, if you were to move from series one, two, three, or four, you would either need a transfer. You really couldn't take an additional appropriation because it's just not there.
Sure, I understand that. I'm talking about just the salary ordinance itself. Would that have to be an amendment?
Yeah, it'd be an amendment.
Just a bit of a transfer. Okay, thank you. Second, do we still cover spouses on city insurance?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. I know that was a question, and I can say that's, that's out of the norm.
It is out of the norm.
I think that's a benefit that we take for granted at times. I can tell you, in my employment history, I've never been able to carry my spouse on my health insurance.
And I would tell you, Councilman Dinkle, that was a provision that was in a lot of the contracts that, based on our negotiation that Brandon concluded with AIM, where they, you know, remove that carve-out necessity. We removed that from those contracts, so.
This is always a difficult conversation we have every year, and I think it's especially this year because we're in negotiations with all of our unions. As you said, Mike, I, we know that everybody in city government is underpaid. That was one of the first things that was very apparent to me after taking office and looking through the budget. It's amazing that we have such dedicated employees that come in every day for what we're able to offer. I wish we could give 10%, 15% raises because everybody deserves it. City Hall employees, Street Department, police, fire, transit, everybody works very hard for the city. But we also, as the fiscal body of the city, have to consider the constraints that Senate Bill 1 particularly has put on us. We were all very concerned when we heard the initial language of that bill. And I don't think we even know today the true impact of what that's going to be. And I, we're very fortunate to have casino revenue to be able to even discuss some of the raises that have been offered this year. That doesn't negate the concerns of the Street Department or any of our unions. I've said before that it's challenging when we give percentage raises across the board for people at the lower end of the scale, because 5% of 30,000 is a lot less than 5% of 80,000. But I know it's difficult to try to find equity in treating all our employees fairly. So I think everybody has valid concerns here. Yeah, I'll yield.
Counselperson Jones.
This one's particularly hard on me. I've got a couple of really good friends on the Street Department, right? And we all know they've gotten their heads kicked in in the last two, three, four storm seasons that we have. Mine's more of a legal question. I guess that would go to Mike. As we all know, I'm old, and this is my fourth non-consecutive term. Has the law changed? I mean, from what I understand, is the only ones that we can raise from the law, legal standpoint by state statute is police and fire. We can only reduce, we can only reduce everybody else.
I'm not sure I understand the question, Jim.
What we're being asked to, to raise it to 10,000 legally.
Okay, yeah, okay.
What I'm saying is the act of code provides, at least it was when I was on.
Sure.
We're not even allowed to do that by state law, is what I'm getting at. So has that, has that changed since I was on last time?
No, no, it has not. You know, you're right in that the amounts that have been published, you know, you could accomplish some things with transfers and that, you know, in a purely hypothetical sense, but you're right in the sense that there would have to be a, a new budget, a new salary ordinance, a new litany of things.
Everybody with the police and fire, that's still fixed by the executive branch.
Yeah.
That's what, that was just a legal question.
Yep. Thank you.
Counselperson Lauterma.
I just have a quick question for Mike, as he talked about earlier, just going forward for the rest of the salary ordinances.
Yes.
Can you tell us which ones have not been voted on or ratified by the unions that are just waiting to go to Board of Public Works?
So fire has been voted on. Police is in the process of being voted on. The wastewater, transit, cemetery, and streets have all been sent out. The proposals have been sent to the department heads to check against what I had. And then assuming those are confirmed, they'll go out to the unions for their.
But they've not started their voting process yet?
No.
Okay.
Did you mention parks?
Parks, yes, yeah. No, um.
Basically, the only one that has voted is fire.
Yes.
Correct?
Yes. The only one that's concluded voting is fire, yes.
Thank you.
Counselperson Bowlin.
I, I'm just kind of struggling with, I mean, I get that we're giving everybody as much as we can give everybody. And negotiations have been ongoing, and we're not a part of that, and we don't need to be a part of that. But I guess, you know, we hear all the time that two departments that continue to bail us out when we have emergency issues are the Street Department and wastewater. And I guess my question is, if the Street Department and wastewater are 65 and 5, is that equal to cemetery employees or?
No, Michael explained that earlier, Councilwoman Bowlin.
I missed it then.
So the Street Department 655 is a cumulative total of 16%. The other bargaining unions have a 555 with a cumulative total of 15%. To echo Councilman Dinkle's comments earlier, hey, I feel like a 5%, it's someone versus 30, versus 80 is separate. Well, what we have been doing is, for different unions, we try to take the middle point and then have a conversation about what that raise looks like there. For other unions, it's 18% on the base pay of a first-year patrolman or a first-year firefighter. So that way, it's not too high for the folks at the top to spread that out. I mean, I think, and I understand where you're going with this question, Councilwoman Bowlin, but we are literally at a point where we have fewer people in sewage billing. We have fewer people in the controller's office. We have fewer people at parks. We have fewer people at the Street Department. We have fewer people at wastewater. We keep getting asked to do more with less. We keep going to the governor's office, to the legislators, saying, you guys vote on these bills, but you never look at them in the eye. The State House never looks at them. The governor never looks at them. But they make these decisions that put us in this situation. So we'll continue to literally give what we can do to deliver a budget that can legally be submitted to the state of Indiana. And we'll try our best. We'll look at our numbers, but, you know, we are unfortunately doing what we can, and we recognize that it is higher than historically what the city was getting, which was either 0, 1, 2, and maybe a 3. So we're proud that we were able to come in and offer more, and we recognize that for some individuals, that's not enough.
I agree, and I do understand. I just, you know, that's just my struggle. And we do need to filter it back up to where it comes from and why we're in this position and continue to talk about that.
The only other point that I wanted to make was, you know, at the meeting on Monday, one of the things that came out of that, and this is more in regards to the question about people at the lower end versus the people at the higher end of those rates. In the Street Department, they do, they do do something different in that every employee gets, like, they spread the increase evenly across all employees. So it will be a higher percentage increase for people at the bottom of those rates and a lower percentage for the people at the top to try and narrow those gaps, so.
Mr. President, I do have one more question.
Counselperson Lauterma.
In a statement. Looking at last year's salary ordinance to this one, did we eliminate a position in the Street Department, in the office?
Yes, not in the office, in the Street Department itself.
Okay, what I see is office manager. It's not listed in the 2026 salary ordinance.
That was, Councilwoman Lauterma, there was, I believe, three years ago, Molly, there were two women in that office, and then one of those positions went away, and the contract never updated to the salary ordinance in and of itself. So that is actually correcting something from three years prior.
Okay.
I believe three years. I think I'm close on that.
Okay, and then I just have one quick statement to make while we're talking about Senate and Road Act 1. I just got back from a conference, and I had some kind of disheartening conversations with some of the financial consultants who have been working with your state reps. So I'm going to pose this to all the unions, and we need to start talking to your state reps, because they, not only do we have the property tax caps, they want to cap the tax rate at possibly $2. If the city's tax rate goes to $2, nobody will be working. I'm just going to be bluntly honest. Nobody will be working. It'll be a very hard conversation. And so I was informed of that. I think we all need to stay on top of that when they start their short session next year. You need to start speaking with your local legislators now. And I'm, I'm very concerned about that. And it is something that was discussed, so. It's such a hard conversation for all of us. But I'll go off my soapbox. I just wanted to make sure that I just found that out, and I want to make sure that everyone's aware of that.
Councilwoman Lauterma, I'll add, had Senate Bill 1 not been passed, an additional billion dollars is in the general fund and able to be levied specifically also across their account. That million dollars could have accounted for all of our non-public safety unions to be able to start negotiations at 1055, right off the bat. That one bill that no one here voted for cost us that much. Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Mr. President, just as a reminder, if no vote to take action occurs or is not unanimous, this will go to next week.
Okay, I'm remembering that I'm supposed to be, like, asking for a motion like three times to make sure that, that we really don't want to do this. So do I hear a motion to, in this case, take action on special ordinance number 22, 2025? That's the first of three. The second one, and the third request for a motion to take action on special ordinance number 22, number 22, 2025. Okay, hearing none. Next order of business, please, Michelle.
Special ordinance 23, 2025, the 2026 salary ordinance for Transit Department.
So, see you next week, guys. Thank you. We have a petitioner on this one? Welcome back, Mike.
You have before you a proposed salary ordinance for the Transit Department. The increases across each of the three years of the proposal is 5%. The one note I would make about transit was some language revision to the certifications that are required for non-bus driver positions.
Thank you, Mike. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to ask a question about special ordinance number 23? Counsel?
Mr. President.
Counselperson Lauterma.
Mike, I have a question, because the salary I have last year for a bus operator was 2137 to 2311. This year, unless my formula's wrong on them, that shows an 8% increase.
That's a typo, sure. I mean, the, yeah, there's not an 8% increase for bus drivers.
Because mine shows 8% all the way down for each one.
Yeah, that's, that's incorrect.
Last year's was a typo. This year shows 5% on last year's.
So what we passed last year was wrong? I mean, I had 24s in front of me. I mean, sorry, 25s. At least I thought. Let me look.
Yeah, special ordinance 23.
Yeah, mine says 2137 for a bus operator, and in my looking, this year's says 2311. My formula shows 8 percent.
I, and I-
And then mine said 2243 to 2424, goes 8 percent.
And I will go back and confirm this, Cheryl, and I will ask the council to provide some time to accommodate that, but the belief is, is that the rates for, the rates that were adopted in 2024 for 2025, maybe didn't make it into the system correctly, so we had been... I don't want to misspeak, which is my only hesitancy and...
Yeah, it's last year's. So did we ever amend last year's to correct it?
That's what I was going to ask.
No, I don't think so. I think we caught this during this process.
But we've been paying them the correct amount, right?
Yes. They did proceed.
But you caught it during this process, but you have been paying them?
I believe that's true.
The higher amount?
Well, I don't want to say that would, we shouldn't be paying somebody more than what's in the salary ordinance, I understand that. Give me one second, let me grab it. Okay.
So the salary ordinance, you're correct, says 2137 per hour, right? They were paid 2201 per hour? So they were paid correctly, and we based the increase off of 2201.
2201?
Is that right?
Is that what you said?
Yeah.
Okay, but it was never brought, that makes 5 percent, but it was never brought back to the council to amend?
Yeah, we just don't figure it out. I, no, apparently not.
So we didn't look at the salary ordinance and pay what was on the salary ordinance beginning of the year of last year of this year? We just added the increase and then from 24s and paid them that, but we didn't actually look at the salary ordinance?
What's your question, Councilwoman Lauterma?
So we just added the percentage from the 24s to the 25s and paid them, but we didn't look at the salary ordinance to see if it was the same.
I mean, it's a procedural error, right? So we know what we are paying our employees, we have a 5 percent on the current salary ordinance, we've identified that last year's salary ordinance for this position was wrong, and we're getting it fixed for next year. I think the employee was paid the correct amount, which is the important part, and it was a procedural error.
Can you give me the rest, Devin? Can you give me what the mechanics were?
So the mechanics for 2025 are 2309 per hour. The cleaners and utility men are 2209, excuse me, 2209, and then the part-time employees are 1879.
So there were 5, 5, and 5?
Yes.
So, I'm sorry, you have the floor, Councilperson Lauterma.
Oh, I yield. Thank you.
What's your pleasure? Would you like us, would you like a week to sort this out and bring us back an amended version?
Yeah, you know what, I think we're good with all the salary ordinances for the rest of the night. We'll bring them next week.
Okay. Anybody would like to make a motion? Or we can continue to discuss.
Can he just take a motion like that, or do we have to do it?
Do we have to do a motion to do it?
No, because we have to take action anyway. We have to do it, take action.
So I guess that constitutes the first offer or request for a motion. So the second request for a motion, do I hear any, do I hear a motion to take action on special ordinance number 23, 2025, second time? Third time? Okay. Next order of business, please, Michelle.
Special ordinance 24, 2025 to 2026 salary ordinance for Parks Department.
We have a petition on this one? Welcome back, Mike.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. What you have before you is a proposal for the 2026 Parks Department Union. Their proposal was, again, a 5 percent raise across each of the three years of the contract. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mike. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to ask a question about special ordinance number 24, 2025? Hearing none? Counsel?
Mr. President.
Councilperson Dinkle.
There's no further discussion, I move that we take action on special ordinance 24, 2025. All in favor of taking action, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so we can take action.
Mr. President.
Councilperson Dinkle.
I move for approval of special ordinance 24, 2025.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilperson Dinkle, second by Councilperson Hinton, that we take action on special ordinance number 24, 2025. All in favor of taking action, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so we can take action.
Mr. President.
Councilperson Dinkle.
I move for approval of special ordinance 24, 2025.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilperson Dinkle, second by Councilperson Hinton, that we approve special ordinance number 24, 2025. All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, it's approved. Next order of business, please, Michelle.
Special ordinance 25, 2025, 2026 salary ordinance for Cemetery Department.
All right, welcome back, Mayor.
We're swapping out, he's got some prior commitments. So in front of you, you've got the 2026 salary ordinance for the Cemetery Department. The negotiations there with this batch in front of you is reflect a 5.55 offer.
Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to ask a question about special ordinance number 25, 2025? Hearing none? Counsel?
Mr. President.
Councilperson Thompson.
So Cemetery, that's one of the ones that has not been signed yet, is that right?
Correct.
Do you know when they're scheduled to meet?
I do not. I know their red line version had been sent to them, and we'd received really good feedback from them.
Okay. I don't need any questions.
Anyone else?
Mr. President.
Councilperson Lauterma.
I just wanted to, when we spoke about this one, did we eliminate one position?
Yes, Councilwoman Lauterma. What we did there is we went down one regular, I say full-time, but hourly employee, and then they have gotten a bump in their part-time employees for seasonal employment.
Okay. So they went from maybe, what, was it six to five?
Six to five, Councilwoman Lauterma.
I, I've got a question about this one. Mayor, I see that we pay for their life insurance 100 percent. Can we, can we talk about that a little bit?
Yes, Councilwoman Nation, that is from a previous contract. So it was one of those where, you know, 90s, early 2000s, there were 24 people at that department. And when you go from 24 to 5 in part-time, there is a conversation around additional insurance to help with them, and that was from a previous contract, and since we're taking them down a person and adding part-time, it was not worth removing that clause because they're already taking a hit in terms of employee numbers.
Thank you for that explanation. Is this the only group that we pay 100 percent of life insurance coverage for?
Councilwoman Nation, off the top of my head, I can't answer that one. I would have to check with city attorney Michael Wright.
No, pretty much all of them get it.
Okay.
25,000. General employees get it. Cemetery get it. Yeah. I'm pretty sure they, I think it's pretty much in everybody's contract. I think that's what this city chose to do.
Right. Councilperson DeBonne.
If there be no further council discussion, I want to make a motion that we approve. I'm sorry, take action on special ordinance 25, 2025.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilperson DeBonne, second by Councilperson Thompson, that we take action on special ordinance number 25, 2025. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We can take action.
I just noticed, I think this is a Scrivener's error, but all the way at the top, it says special ordinance number 25, 2026.
I noticed that, too.
That's on the ordinance itself, back on the agenda, so I suspect that doesn't really matter, but pointing it out. Councilperson DeBonne.
I'll make a motion that we approve special ordinance 25, 2025, in front of us.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilperson DeBonne, second by Councilperson Hinton, that we approve special ordinance number 25, 2025. All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Approved. Thank you, Mayor.
Yep.
Next order of business, please, Michelle.
Special ordinance 26, 2025, 2026 salary ordinance for wastewater treatment plant.
You're on.
So in front of you all, you'll see the salary or special ordinance number 26, 2025. No error on this one, so always get to focus on the positives. Big changes here, this is a 5.55 contract. We did bring in the two lab techs, they were kind of off on their own, and the duties and responsibilities of them had been adding up, so they had agreed to go into the union, the administration agreed to do that. Of note, within this budget, the wastewater treatment plant budget, partially what's helped this raise is we essentially had a, I say duplicate, but we had two positions that would help as safety coordinator, seeing as our department heads and our assistant department heads are trained in active safety coordinators. That position was able to come out. While that is a non-union position, it did help take care of some of these numbers in these raises. So in front of you, you have the first of three years at a 5.55.
Thanks, Mayor.
Yep.
Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to ask a question about special ordinance number 26, 2025? Hearing none? Counsel? Councilperson Chalos.
I move we act on special ordinance 26, 2025.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilperson Chalos, second by Councilperson Dinkle, that we take action on special ordinance number 26, 2025. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we can take action. Councilperson Chalos.
I move that we pass special ordinance 26, 2025.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilperson Chalos, second by Councilperson Dinkle, that we approve special ordinance number 26, 2025. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we can take action. Councilperson Chalos.
I move that we pass special ordinance 26, 2025.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilperson Chalos, second by Councilperson Dinkle, that we approve special ordinance number 26, 2025. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that one passes. Next order of business, please.
Special ordinance 27, 2025 to 2026 salary ordinance for police civilian employees. I believe you have a proposed amendment before you.
You're on there.
Wait one second.
You got that amended version up in front of you?
Yeah, that's what I'm pulling up to make sure. All right, so what we have in front of us, special ordinance number 27, 2025. Okay, this is the police civilian union. Their contract is a three-year contract. It is slightly different, and here's why. We have to file the budget. We had filed the budget, and then essentially, honestly, and I mean this in the best way, forgot that they had been looped into the fire in the police department, and there was a clause in there that we had to look at, which was the parity clause. We did agree to do a 3.75, so they get that total of 15 percent, which we completely understand, hey, look how this is written in, we can't make that change this year. We will get the two points back on the year two. So you've got a 3.75 in front of you. We added the social worker, we did add the public records and litigation coordinator. That is a different rate, that rate is at 3.44 because of the higher base salary with that said position.
Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to ask a question about special ordinance number 27, 2025? Hearing none? Counsel? Mayor, just so I'm tracking what you just explained, it's a 3.75 for everybody except for the public relation, public records and litigation coordinator?
Except the social workers, because they were on a United Way grant, right, until this year, so they didn't get a bump for last year. So their year one bump is higher, and then they go 0 percent for year two, and then I believe 2 percent for year three. So there was a course correction there because the grant wasn't really allowing us to increase that position for this year, so we had to go back and clean some of that up.
So am I understanding, then, that you're, that on this piece of legislation, there are three different rates?
Yes.
There's a 3.75 for secretary level three, parking violations clerk, facilities coordinator, and then, I'm sorry, what's the rate for the social worker? The percentage, rather?
Hold on, I'm checking the math to make sure I give you the right number for year one.
Well, they went from 57 to 66, which was a 15.79 percent.
What I see here is 58,000.
No.
710 struck out on the ordinance itself that's before us.
Right, but last year they were 57, for 2025, they're 57,000.
Okay.
So we're taking them to 66.
Yes.
So it's a little over 15, and then you said the second year, zero.
Zero.
Third year, two, or two.
Three.
No. Two.
Two.
We're all having fun today, folks.
15 and a half, zero, two.
Okay. And that's the social worker with, that's coming off of the United Way grant, has special circumstances, and then public records and litigation coordinator at 3.44. Is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you. I'll stop asking questions, and Councilperson Lauterma.
I did notice some other amendments to this. Did that take place after we got the first one, which was the reward days? Did that change? The reward days? Because it did say two, now we're given, we're all, we're given two instead of one in three months, not two months.
Right, that is being changed primarily to make it easier for bookkeeping. Everybody's in the same system, so if the guy that keeps track of reward days for officers and civilian union members, it's easier if it's all the same.
So they get the same as the police. Police gets three months, they get two reward weeks.
Right.
Consecutive months, they get two reward days. Okay. That was just the change I noticed from the initial one.
And sick days increased?
And sick days increased, yes. From like nine to 12, was that what it was?
Correct.
Nine to 12, maybe. And was that to match the police? Oh, sick days, they get one per month, theirs is different.
Yeah, theirs is different.
Well, actually, they really almost get 12 because they get one per month. Okay, I yield, thank you.
Thanks. Anybody else? Councilperson Dinkle.
There's no further discussion, I move that we take action on special ordinance 27, 2025.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilperson Dinkle, second by Councilperson Chalos, that we take action on special ordinance number 20-
There's no further discussion, I move that we take action on special ordinance 27, 2025.
Second.
It's been moved by counselperson Dinkle, second by counselperson Chalos, that we take action on special ordinance number 27, 2025. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we can take action.
Mr. President.
Counselperson Dinkle.
I move that we amend special ordinance 27, 2025 as presented.
Second.
It's been moved by counselperson Dinkle, and second by counselperson Hinton, that we amend special ordinance 27, 2025 as presented. All in favor of amending, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, it's amended.
Mr. President.
Counselperson Dinkle.
I move that we approve special ordinance 27, 2025 as amended.
Second.
It's been moved by counselperson Dinkle, second by counselperson Hinton, that we approve special ordinance number 27, 2025 as amended. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that one passes. Thank you. Next order of business, please, Michelle.
Special ordinance 28, 2025, the 2026 salary ordinance for the police department.
So this is your police one, they're currently out to vote on their contract. It includes an 18% for one year, and then 0% for year two, year three on base pay. Year two, though, the rank pay is increased, that 18% amount, that rank pay is different based on each rank, so it's not, you're not essentially taking, you know, say $75,000 again and multiplying it by 18, there's a stipend for that rank pay. This allows us to stretch out that impact, even though it's marginal, but we can take that on next year instead of all this year.
Can you explain that just a little bit more about the
Yeah.
Base, the, the, based on the rank, the impact of rank on this, please?
So, we'll use this example, right? So say Kevin Barrett, our police chief, and David Thompson are with us. So say, in this example, David's a sergeant and Kevin's a lieutenant. They get, for instance, 50 or $100 based on the pay. That's not the exact amount, I'm using those numbers because they're round and end with a zero. Next year, they get 18% on their base pay increase, both our sergeant and our lieutenant in this example. In year two, their 50 and $100 stipend would increase the amount of 18%. So in our current example, our lieutenant would go up to 118 instead of 100, and our sergeant would go up 59 instead of 50. Does that make sense?
It makes sense. I'll stop asking questions and let somebody else. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to ask a question about special ordinance number 28, 2025? Counselperson Chalos.
There's nothing else I'd like to propose, we act on special ordinance 28, 2025.
Second.
It's been moved by counselperson Chalos, second by counselperson DeBonne, that we take action on special ordinance number 28, 2025. All in favor of taking action, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we can take action.
I move we pass special ordinance 28, 2025.
Second.
It's been moved by counselperson Chalos, second by counselperson DeBonne, that we approve special ordinance number 28, 2025. I'm going to call for discussion on this. I think somebody has to ask the obvious question, can we afford this?
Yes. So the beauty of this, councilman nation, is with our health insurance increase being at 0% and locked in essentially at a single-digit rate next year, we, where Senate Bill One hurts us is the growth, right, the, the extra property tax you're getting year to year. So theoretically, from this year to next year and the year after, that amount, the growth isn't coming in as much as it used to, but there is still growth to allow for your, I say like operat, operational increases, insurance, general property casualty insurance. So the contract is spread out very deliberately to front-load it, so we can take the bulk of the growth of 2025 to 2026 to those departments, and then it spreads out and hits zero, and since it's zero in year two and year three, the growth in year two and year three actually fund the differences for your other collective bargaining units and your other city functions.
It's different than we've done in the past, and I'm not saying that's bad, I'm just saying I'm struggling to understand, especially as we factor in some of the points that have been made previously about the impact of SEA One, or what we think might be the impact of SEA Two, One. I understand that nobody knows what's really going to happen, and that there's the outside possibility that the legislature might change things or whatever.
Yeah.
And none of this is meant to cast shade on what you've proposed. I think that, you know, if you have negotiated this with our public safety union, unions, and you have it figured out as to how we're going to pay for it, then I believe in you, mayor, I want to support you. So, there's, we can take action, we've got a vote, I'm sorry, we've got a motion and a second. All in favor of special ordinance number 28, 2025, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes, thank you. Next order of business, please, Michelle.
Special ordinance 29, 2025, the 2026 salary ordinance for the fire department.
You're up, mayor.
If you take all of my comments from the previous ordinance and change the word police to fire, that is what you have in front of you all, with the exception of one thing. So the police uniform pay is 500 for three years. That adds up to $1,500. The fire is zero this year, but 750, 750 for year two, year three, so it then adds up to 1,500 at the end of that three-year contract, so they're both in parity.
So is this an 18-0-0 or not?
Yes.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to ask a question about special ordinance number 29, 2025? Hearing none, council? Counselperson Chalos.
If there's nothing else, I propose we act on special ordinance 29, 2025.
Second.
It's been moved by counselperson Chalos, second by counselperson Thompson, that we take action on special ordinance number 29, 2025. All in favor of taking action, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We can take action. Counselperson Chalos.
I move we pass special ordinance 29, 2025.
It's been moved by counselperson Chalos, second by counselperson DeBonne, that we approve special ordinance number 29, 2025. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. Next order of business, please, Michelle.
Special ordinance 30, 2025 to 2026 salary ordinance for the mayor.
In front of you, you have the mayor's salary ordinance. This is reflective of a 3% raise. One key difference over the last two years, we've reduced the personnel in that department going from three to two, and then I do cut my cell phone stipend in half, and give, use that amount for LaDonna's cell phone stipend, because I do call her after hours for a number of things, and this job is not in eight to four by any means, and I recognize that if I'm doing that as an employer, that that should be there.
Thank you, mayor. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to ask a question about special ordinance number 30, 2025? Hearing none, council?
Mr. President.
Counselperson Dinkle.
If there's no further discussion, I move that we take action on special ordinance 30, 2025.
Second.
It's been moved by counselperson Dinkle, second by counselperson Chalos, that we take action on special ordinance number 30, 2025. All in favor of taking action, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we can take action.
Mr. President.
Counselperson Dinkle.
I move that we approve special ordinance 30, 2025.
Second.
It's been moved by counselperson Dinkle, second by counselperson Lauter, that we approve special ordinance number 30, 2025. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that one passes. Thank you, mayor. Next order of business, please, Michelle.
Special ordinance 31, 2025, the 2026 salary ordinance for city council.
In front of you all, you have your city council ordinance, so I worked on this one with council president nation, it is reflective of a 12% bump, asterix there, but the council had, I mean, almost a decade of no bump at all. So there had to be some course correction, and you are still underpaid compared to your peers in other cities, but this is what we're able to offer at this time.
Thank you, mayor. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to ask a question about special ordinance number 31, 2025? Hearing none, council? I have one observation. In section two and section three, there's language that says, "City of Terre Haute will provide to each full-time permanent employee whose established, whose salary is established by this ordinance," et cetera. We are not full-time permanent employees. I understand that this is boilerplate language that's probably always been in our ordinance, but I probably should have called it a long time ago.
Oh, I see it now.
I would like to propose that we strike the three words, "full-time" and "permanent," and the amended on the floor language would then read, "The city of Terre Haute will provide to each employee whose salary is established by this ordinance," et cetera. I'd like to propose that that be done for both section two and section three.
I would second, I propose an amendment.
Can you put it forth in the, I, I can't make an amendment, so can you make the amendment?
Mr. President.
Counselperson Dinkle.
I have a question.
Sure.
If they, if they take that language out, city attorney told me that it's in there because the city doesn't offer insurance to part-time employees.
Oh.
So does it need to be in there?
I would think that it would. Granted, I am not an attorney, so at this time, I'm going to publicly state that my legal advice should be considered, that I am not an attorney. I would recommend pausing on that amendment, though, and if needed, to amend the salary ordinance at a later date with that language, councilman nation.
Yeah, okay.
And I'll just throw in there that you are, I'm, me as, myself as well, and the judge, we're considered employees when it comes to salaries, because like our salaries, State Board of Accounts, DLGF consider us receiving a salary as an employee, even though we're elected. So be careful on removing too much.
I understand, and I won't go down the rabbit hole of whether we're part-time or full-time. Okay. So, sorry to get us off on that side, sidebar, folks. I believe that I've asked for public comment, and there was none, now we're still in council discussion. Counselperson Dinkle.
So Mike, would it be best that we approve this and then amend it later, or should we table it tonight?
Just take no action. That's it.
Just approve it and then amend it if it needs to, but that language may need to stay in there, too.
Sure.
I mean, that's the question, and you don't want to write your health insurance out of your salary.
Exactly.
I don't.
And there was an amendment to the statutes, which I do not recall the exact statute, top of my head, it's under 36, but you are, as an elected official, considered full-time.
Okay.
Okay, hearing that advice, I will move that we take action on special ordinance 31, 2025.
It's been moved by counselperson Dinkle, second by counselperson Boland, that we take action on special ordinance number 31, 2025. All in favor of taking action, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we can take action.
Mr. President.
Counselperson Dinkle.
I move that we approve special ordinance 31, 2025.
Second.
It's been moved by counselperson Dinkle, second by counselperson Hinton, that we approve special ordinance number 31, 2025. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, it's approved. Thank you, mayor.
I'd like to thank the mayor for noting the long time since we have received appropriate salary increases. Also, just for the comment, we also don't require office space, or laptops, or uniforms, or cell phones, or any of those other things that cost the city those additional funds. So we appreciate your
I should also thank you for not almost writing out your health insurance, even though that would have been a savings to you.
Right, yeah, it would have been a savings.
But I appreciate that these guys need it, so thank you for that, too.
I was going to write out my own health insurance.
But I'm getting the badge.
Saved by the attorney, Michelle. All right, next order of business, please, Michelle.
Special ordinance 32, 2025, the 2026 salary ordinance for the city court judge. I'm almost scared to go with his and mine now. Is there anything you want to remove?
Michelle, correct me if I'm wrong, the judge and yourself are just the clerk and the judge because the staffs are in the
Correct.
City Hall ordinance, which is special ordinance 21, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so in front of you then is the city court judge, which reflects a 3% raise.
Thanks, mayor. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to ask a question about special ordinance number 32, 2025? Hearing none, council?
Mr. President.
Counselperson Hinton.
If there's no discussion, I move that we take action on special ordinance 32, 2025.
Second.
It's been moved by counselperson Hinton, second by counselperson Thompson, that we take action on special ordinance number 32, 2025. All in favor of taking action, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we can take action.
Mr. President.
Counselperson Hinton.
I move to approve special ordinance 32, 2025.
Second.
It's been moved by counselperson Hinton, second by counselperson Thompson, that we approve special ordinance number 32, 2025. All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that's approved. Next order of business, please, Michelle.
Special ordinance 32, 2025, oh, sorry, 33, I've lost track. 33, 2025, it's my salary. 2026 salary ordinance for the city clerk.
Are you our petitioner, Michelle?
Sure, why not? Hopefully you'll let me get paid next year. Happy to answer any questions, and again, it's just my salary, not my staff, they're in city hall salary ordinances.
Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to ask a question about special ordinance number 33, 2025? Council? I'd like to make the obvious statement that I really appreciate all that Michelle does for us.
Yeah.
Second.
And I'd entertain a motion at this point.
Mr. President.
Counselperson Dinkle.
I move that we take action on special ordinance 33, 2025.
Second.
It's been moved by counselperson Dinkle, second by counselperson Thompson, that we take action on special ordinance number 33, 2025. All in favor of taking action, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we can take action.
Mr. President.
Counselperson Dinkle.
Move that we approve special ordinance 33, 2025.
It's been moved by counselperson Dinkle, second by counselperson Thompson, that we approve special ordinance number 33, 2025. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we're going to pay you again next year, Michelle. Thank you.
The judge and I thank you.
Next order of business, please, Michelle.
Special ordinance 34, 2025, the 2026 salary ordinance for redevelopment.
You're on again?
Yes, so in front of you, you've got the redevelopment salary ordinance. Now, for two of them, it is not directly 3%, specifically the office manager was a little bit higher, it's just easier to take that to a round zero number, and then for real estate administrator, you will notice that it's a little bit lower because someone had moved into that position who didn't have that longevity, but was still a bump for that individual by moving to that position. So in front of you, you've got the redevelopment team, they've done a great job with the infill lots, with obviously recruiting, Indiana Railroad, a number of downtown Tiff and Eastside projects as well.
Thank you, mayor. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to ask a question about special ordinance number 34, 2025? Hearing none, council? Hearing none, counsel? Counselperson Chalos.
I move that we take action on Special Ordinance 34, 2025.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselperson Chalos, second by Counselperson Thompson, that we take action on Special Ordinance Number 34, 2025. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we can take action now. Counselperson Chalos.
I move that we pass Special Ordinance 34, 2025.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselperson Chalos, second by Counselperson Thompson, that we approve Special Ordinance Number 34, 2025. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that's approved. The next up is the budget.
The budget.
Next order of business, please, Michelle.
Appropriation 14, 2025, the 2026 City of Terre Haute budget. You must vote to take action.
Thank you. All right, you're on, Mayor.
Let me reset up councilmanation.
It's all right. Sorry, we skipped it, we moved it all around.
Just trying to make it back to Reed Cat in the Hat one time tonight to Little Scarlet. That's okay, she'll wake me up at 1:00 AM, I can read it to her then. All right, folks. Okay, in front of you, you've got appropriation 14, 2025. This is a Budget Form One budget estimate for the City of Terre Haute. It is a very lengthy document, 57 pages, but it breaks it down, casino, riverboat, general, scrolling here. Edit, fire pension, local road and street, motor vehicle highway. So this is your overall collective budget from the presentation that we did a week prior, 1.45, 1.47% increase from 2024 to 2025. At this time, I'll take any questions on the overall budget.
Thank you, Mayor. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to ask a question about appropriation Number 14, 2025, the 2026 City of Terre Haute budget? Hearing none, counsel? Counselperson Chalos.
I move that we take action on appropriation 14, 2025.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselperson Chalos, second by Counselperson Boland, that we take action on appropriation 14, 2025. All in favor of taking action, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We can take action. Counselperson Chalos.
I move to pass appropriation 14, 2025, the budget.
It's been moved by Counselperson Chalos, second by Counselperson Boland, that we approve appropriation Number 14, 2025. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that passes. Thank you, Mayor.
I'm afraid we're stuck here tonight. We're not going to be able to leave.
Michelle, do you have any reminders or anything for next week?
We will see you next week.
All right.
I will say I am out of town next week, so I will not be here.
Sorry to hear it. Okay.
Can we call George?
It's been moved by Counselperson Lattimer, second by Counselperson Hinton, that we adjourn. All in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
Aye.
See you next week, folks. Thank you for standing in adjournment.
Give George a call and tell him we can't leave until he.